I call the city of Iscany City Council meeting to order for Wednesday, August 7th. If we get home, please rise for pleasure legends.
My pleasure legends to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
All council members are present. Motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mayor, we do have an addendum for the agenda tonight. This is to add business item J seven, which is approving the temporary placement of the USPS cluster mailboxes at Eagle Park.
Motion to adopt the agenda. I was just gonna say with that, we, Ms. Wood and I got a late call from the postal office saying that they had asbestos in their floor, and they have to rip up the floor and replace it. And it's gonna take them about two months.
Up to.
Up to two months to do so, and they needed a temporary spot to do the long cabinets that are slots for mailboxes. And they have almost three hundred residents that would have to travel to North Branch to get their mail if we didn't help them out some way, shape, or form. And I'm assuming this is what you did here due diligence, so we have this to look at as well, fellas.
Motion to adopt with changes.
Sorry? Motion to adopt the agenda with changes by Councilman Lundin, secondly, Councilman Berkeley, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Proclamation, commendations, and certified awards. As many know, the twenty nineteen Jubilee Parade happened, and this is the Mayor's Choice Award, which I decided to choose our local BMX. I thought their float was pretty cool. And my son in the background saying, "Uh-oh," thought it was gold too, and he's only ten months, so... If we could have... Ms. Bettendorf, step forward for me. Ms. Bettendorf, if you don't mind, maybe giving a little background of this award, and... And I will allow you to present this award. We have some BMX kids in the audience. If we could get them to come up front as well, and we'll take a photo with everybody before, so let's...
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity. So on behalf of the committee of many volunteers and community members that put on the parade, there are a number of awards that are given, anything from best youth to best commercial, and that royalty floats. And one of them is the Mayor's Choice, and so I'm pleased to bring this little plaque here this evening that you... For the, that I'm sure that you have chosen in our great parade to honor with this, so...
And if we could have the children and adults from BMX step forward and take a photo with this cool little trophy. If you guys would come up, come around and up by the flag here. Alright, the two young ladies right here from the USA TV, please, or the USA TV, please. These two young ladies, just so everyone knows, they just got back from Belgium. They were representing the United States of America racing. So, you have two of them. Congratulations to the young ladies that represented the USA and the BMX for giving the Mayor's Choice Award. Alright, moving on to the Rough Start Rescue. We have an individual, Ms. Wood, do we, in the audience? If you wouldn't mind stepping forward, there was a donation box at the liquor store for Rough Start Rescue. Maybe you can give a little insight on that for us?
So every year, for the past couple of years, we've done, through the Minnesota Municipal Beerers Association, we do a pet supply drive to work with local organizations. Rough Start is in Princeton, which is local, and we raised funds in the supplies form. And then we also recently received a check for two hundred dollars from the MMBA to go to Rough Start Rescue. So we just wanna present that to the organization.
Awesome. You guys want photos of this as well? If you two wouldn't mind stepping up in front of the flag here as well, we'll take some photos.
Good luck.
Who is this, Julia? You're the one presenting here. Steve and Dan, you're, guess you gotta come up too. Go on the other side. Congratulations to the Rough Start Rescue. Approval of the city council minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Collison to approve, and a second by Councilman Lundin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Announcements. Committee of the whole, Tuesday, August 20th, at 5:00 p.m. City Council, Tuesday, August 20th, as well, at 7:00 p.m. Any planning commission meeting will immediately follow the city council meeting on Tuesday, August 20th, as well. Park and Recreation Culture Board meeting, Tuesday, August 27th, at 6:00 p.m. Any project work session, may be, in parentheses, Tuesday, August 20th, as well. Any council committee reports? I do have one, actually, myself. Everybody was sent out a memo by Ms. Sheila Selman. Everybody on this council? Please read that. You'll understand why. Anybody else have any council committee reports? Alright, with that, we'll open the public hearing for the resolution approving Heritage Estates setback.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Level Contracting LLC is requesting City Council to consider the setbacks that are set by Resolution 218-284 for the Heritage Estates Planning Development, specifically a decreased per yard setback. This was discussed at Planning Commission in great detail. Basically, what we're looking for is the city council to consider the new resolution that's attached that basically is clarifying setbacks and clarifying the lot count because the original resolution was incorrect. One of the requests by Level Contracting was to reduce the per yard setbacks to ten feet. The Planning Commission directed staff to do that. However, along one of the outlets, along outlet... Along outlet C, that could only be reduced to fifteen feet because this was drainage utility easement. We did talk to Level Contracting, they're okay with that, unless some needs there needs. So the resolution before you is clarifying setbacks and also clarifying the lot count because the original resolution did have some technicals in it. Do you have to answer any questions?
Any questions by the council?
Both parties are agreeing. Are you agreeing, Brian?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, all, yeah, one more thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Is there anybody that would like to speak on this public hearing before I go any further? I will close this public hearing.
I make a motion to approve.
An emotion approved by Councilman Lundin, and a second by Councilman Collison, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Business item, we have an interview applicant for the vacant park recreation and culture board seat, Mr. Brian Thump. If you would step forward, please. Did we provide you with these questions, Mr. Thump? Yes, it did. Do you need a copy now?
Oh, looks like there's one right here. Look at that.
Apparently it stamps on top of things. I'm kidding. First question, what is the Park and Recreation Board's role?
To develop and maintain parks and trails and activities in the community of Iscany.
What is your vision of the park and recreational system for the city?
You know, I'd like to see the park system continue to grow and, you know, and activities and just get better and grow in community. And I think there's a lot that is still to be done around here.
Alright, do you have any experience in the Park and Recreation Board or Recreation members, Brian?
I do not.
And do you volunteer within the Iscany community?
I, every once in a while, I volunteer at the BMX track, you know, when they have their, you know...
You're being pretty big.
What's up?
You're being pretty big and biased. You're always at BMX.
That's true, I am always up there, but yeah, I will definitely help out up there when needed, when they have their work nights or... Just when I'm there picking up garbage and whatever the guys need, if they need anything, you know, they come ask me.
And you're more willing to extend that to more parks?
Absolutely.
Alright, can you attend every meeting that starts at 6:00 p.m.?
Yes.
Any further questions by the council? Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second. Motion to accept by Councilman Lundin, and a second by Councilman Collison, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Welcome to Park and Rec, Mr. Thump.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Discussion regarding Minspect. This is one that I put on the agenda. Some of you may or may not know, we've gotten quite a few complaints about Minspect. They're holding up permits, they're making some of the builders go above and beyond what they should be doing. Councilman Lundin actually had to deal with him in the house that he just recently built. I'm sure he could say a few things on behalf of this complaint session or section as well. I'm just a little worried that Minspect isn't holding up what the city of Iscany needs. I don't know if we wanna discuss this further in Committee of the Whole, if we would... There's not any action that needs to be taken this evening?
I will table this to Committee of the Whole, because I think I'll get some discussion.
Fair enough.
I'll second that.
Alright, we'll table this for Committee of the Whole. Motion made by Councilman Berkeley, and a second by Councilman Collison, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
I just wanna add, though, we don't wanna delay this any longer.
No, I'm not in favor of delaying, I just think...
Don't, I know, but I'm just, I'm just being...
It's always gonna be taken care of, right?
Well, it could, we could, but we don't have to.
We don't have to. I just, the only reason I'm just gonna say, we don't wanna delay this any longer, because these permits are being held up weeks and weeks.
Could the, could the real staff to maybe...
Where did he go?
Bring to the...
Where did he go? We had Ms. Sheila Selman talk to Minspect, I've had a meeting with Minspect, Ms. Wood's had a meeting with Minspect.
Right, no, I was, what I was gonna say is maybe for Committee of the Whole, bring some other options, maybe we could discuss.
Second.
If that's possible.
Mayor, council, is it a desire to have Minspect in attendance? I can be the whole to answer any questions?
I personally don't think it's, it's not gonna do me any good to be here.
I can tell you this, we gave them thirteen, thirteen addresses on why their permits were held up. Now, any, oh, I do see one developer in the audience that your permit would normally take two to four days to have to the city and back to you, correct? And they're taking way longer. Four weeks. That's ridiculous.
I do know that I was told by somebody that if they were to use their engineering firm, it would go quicker. That is very unethical, very unethical. And that's... I've been doing construction for forty-plus years. And I'm gonna tell you something, the way this guy treated me at my house on the permits issues, they did exactly what they wanted done. They refused that because they wanted to see the math work on the heat loss. I'm gonna tell you right now, well, the reason you ask to see the math is because you don't know how to do it. The calculations come up saying, no matter what way you do it, if you don't know how to do it, so you're asking somebody to do it for you, so you don't, so then you understand. That is unethical either. And I just, I, I don't care if you're a good builder, terrible builder, whatever builder, if your building meets code and your plans and engineering stamps are code, there is no reason to delay it. And I'm just gonna tell you right now, they are subbing out to other cities that can't keep up with their own permits and inspections. Lake Elmo is one of them. If you can't keep up with what you've already been hired to do, why are you doing this elsewhere? That's not ethical either. There should be no reason it takes four weeks to run around. They're coming quicker than that.
There's concern for me because we have all these developments that are coming in. I mean, you gentlemen sit on the same boards as I do. They're all being stalled because of Minspect. And some of them, I will admit, are bouncing between the city and Minspect. And, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm missing a piece here, Ms. Selman, but they're bouncing around, but it seems to be that they're sitting at Minspect longer than they should be.
Their staff does like everybody else.
And I guess the biggest thing, because we all do very much trust our staff, I would lean and say, "Ms. Selman, what would your recommendation be?" But I don't know that I wanna put it on that unless she wants to answer that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, this has been brought to our attention several times.
Several.
From different people, and I did do a sample of permits with Minspect, I did, it wasn't based on anybody's complaint. I just kinda went through and tried to ask them to explain how, why it took them so long, you know, what the process was. And a lot of it was back and forth with them, and this was according to them, is with Minspect and the builder themselves as far as getting plans back and forth. Getting engineer helps, things like what Ms. Selman was saying, you know, back and forth. That seems to be what their holdup is on the sample that I gave them.
But at the same time, we did have a gentleman that said he's been doing it thirty years. He said that what, what he did was some of the things that were being asked, he knew they needed more, but he only gave them what was asked. He said, "I knew I should've gave them what I knew I should've gave them, but I didn't. I gave them what they asked for, and sure enough, after a week or a week and a half of them holding that permit, then they came back and asked for what he knew should've been there." So he gave them that, and it still took them another week, week and a half. So essentially, I mean, there, there's a developer right here in the audience that's saying four weeks. I mean, we're hearing two to four weeks that these permits are being hung up, and I'm hearing it by multiple realtors, builders, developers, homeowners, commercial owners. It's a concern. So we, I mean, I'm more than happy to put some facts together, Ms. Wood, if we could. Can maybe give some options and see what the council wants to do, I'm more than happy to do that. But I'm making you gentlemen aware that this is an issue in the city.
I think... Because I see it all, yeah, I hear, I hear from the commercial, for example, I know it, so...
You got one major conflict, actually.
No, I know that, I talked to him, so...
And I just want you to realize that this is a time-sensitive thing.
It is?
Yeah, absolutely.
We want, we want the city, we want builders to come here as a taxpayer, if you want, that would do more offices. That's going to help alleviate pet increases. You want businesses to come, that helps alleviate taxes. All these things need to be looked at in a big picture, not this little one at the moment. And this little picture in the moment is drawing us from making this bigger move.
So would you guys be, would you be okay with, if we discuss this at Committee of the Whole and we decide we wanna do something, but we push it to that council meeting, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay, I just tell you, because I thought that's where we did these things, was discuss, take the whole first and then...
That's fine. We can do that, Councilman, very good.
But what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, we cannot tell, if you could, if we can take that during now, I didn't think we could take that during now.
Well, I mean, I can understand, I can understand, you know, you wanna hear more information, what is our alternatives, what can we do different? I understand that. I just, I think I agree with Mayor Johnson, that if we discuss this at Committee of the Whole, that we can push it right on with the council meeting and make a decision at that point. And I agree with, I think that'd be the wisest thing to do.
Yeah, I'm not, you want more info, I'm, yeah, I'm game, but if we do decide we wanna get more info, that's...
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Moving on to the resolution approving a special permit application for the twenty nineteen Minnesota State Series final races. Larry gives in attendance, if Larry wouldn't mind stepping forward. I always have your last name, so I'm even trying, Larry.
Sir, good morning, I'm Mayor Johnson, council members. One of our BMX is proud to be sponsoring, hosting the two thousand nineteen state championships for BMX. A lot of these racers, some of which you've seen tonight, have spent their summer, not just wandering around, but traveling to eleven different tracks in Minnesota, trying to earn enough points to race in the championship and possibly earn a state plate, a state plate that these kids will earn, will get them an invitation to Tulsa, Oklahoma, for what's called the Race of Champions. So our city will be hosting the state championship again this year. We are expecting anywhere from a thousand, fifteen hundred people at the arena on these days. The event will start on Thursday. We have a professional guy coming in, and he will be training our racers. He will give them additional training. Saturday and Sunday is the team finals and the individual finals for the championships. So we're asking for the approval of the special events permit.
Larry, maybe you mentioned it, I missed it. When does this event take place?
This event will take place August twenty-third through the twenty-fifth.
I do tend to pop in there, you know, so this one, that would be one I wanna see.
Yes, this is a big event. We also will be expecting a lot of our people who are representing the United States. Minnesota did have nine riders travel the pelvis, and those nine riders will be at our facility. One of the riders is a twelve-year-old, he is a three-time world champion. He is from Minnesota. And he will be there, so if you wanna see some really good racing, come on out.
Awesome.
I think a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Lundin, and a second by Councilman Collison, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much, Larry.
Thank you.
Resolution approving the final plan and site plan for Legacy Pines second edition. Ms. Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant, Urban Land Holdings, is requesting a final plan and site interview for Legacy Pines second edition. This proposed final plan contains thirty-three single bedroom lots. The entire development for Legacy Pines has had preliminary approval and other through the base plan. The total case is one hundred and seventy-seven lots. This item was before the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission does recommend approval with the conditions that are listed in the resolution. The finding facts have done that. The resolution also reflects the city engineer's comments and requirements, and the fire department did not have any comments on this. Part of phase two for the Legacy, Legacy Pines is that they will provide a permanent access for Legacy Park, and they will create a parking lot. Do you have to answer any questions?
You just answered mine. I wanted to know the access to the park, and you just answered it.
Mr. Mayor, could I add, the urban developer to provide the temporary access to the park?
Can we get this?
There's lots of questions with that, but we do have to figure it out now.
I make a motion to approve.
Second, motion to approve by Councilman Lundin, and a second by Councilman Berkeley, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Resolution approving the preliminary plan for villages on the Rum six division. Ms. Selman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant, Selmer Holmes Incorporated, they are requesting approval of a new plan for villages on the Rum six division. This is basically a replac, thirty-two town home lots and six-two family detached town home lots. The Planning Commission did review this at their last meeting, they did recommend approval. There was one person in the audience that said that we did not need any more additional lots, and then the commission explained that this is actually a reduction of lots, just a different style. So the Planning Commission did recommend approval. The resolution and finding facts are in your packet. The resolution does reflect the requirements and conditions from the city engineer, and also there is a comment from the fire department regarding access, and that's something that we'll need to work on for final plan. Final plan will hold before the Planning Commission at City Council.
Is that, they wanted to extend that little road, right, for access to get...
Yeah, so let's figure out if we're going to extend it, or how we're gonna address that. But right now, the preliminary plan, we're just looking at, you know, the conditions will hold for the final, and also if the council wanted to reduce the boundaries, the single bedroom lots from the town home lots.
Any discussion, comments, questions, concerns by the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll say it. Motion to approve by Councilman Collison, and a second by Councilman Gordon.
I have a certification, why, so why is this going to the Planning Commission? This is not a final decision?
This is a preliminary plan, and so final plan has to go, there won't be a public hearing, but final plan does have to go through the Planning Commission and council.
Alright. I have a... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Resolution award recommendation for annexed parcel services extension. Mr. Jason Cook.
So as directed, we went out for quotes for the installation of sewer and water services that were stated as immediately available. We received two quotes, we downed for three different requests, but two quotes came in. Dirt Works Inc., a hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars was the low responsible bidder. It was slightly above the engineer's estimate, but given the time constraint of essentially they have to do it in either September or October, seems a reasonable fee, and we're recommending even awarding Dirt Works a minimum.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion to approve from Councilman Collison, and a second by Councilman Berkeley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to the addendum to the agenda. That was a resolution approving temporary placement of USPS cluster mailboxes at Eagle Park.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion to approve by Councilman Collison, and a second by Councilman Lundin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Approval of the consent agenda.
Motion paid.
Second. Motion to approve all the consent agenda by Councilman...
This question?
Oop, go ahead, Councilman Berkeley.
I just noticed that...
I just noticed that... That the Dollar General Development Agreement out there, and I was a little surprised that they'd grown a greater agenda just because that was such a... We had such a public hearing, and I had to make sure... Did this go through with all the cheese that we talked about in the planning commission? I was wondering why this is on the consent agenda and not on our...
Sure, I'll refer that over to Ms. Selman.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, council, that's just something that I've used to doing is putting developer agreements when they're not controversial, is putting them on consent agenda. If you'd like to put business in the future, certainly can do that.
Well, Dollar General seemed to be majorly controversial, although we had some people that were concerned with. Wanted to make sure all their, we tried to address all their concern and disruption and, you know...
And some...
Yeah, that's all...
That's all right.
That's all part of the development premise.
Any other questions, concerns, of council? With that, I have a motion to approve by Councilman Lundin, and a second by Councilman Collison. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion to adjourn by Councilman Lundin, and a second by Councilman Burgley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero, therefore we stand adjourned.